You know, like, shut it down if you're worried nobody can hear you.
I'm gonna get the lights.
But if one of them's calling you.
You're fired? You're fired. You're...
My mother's... They test her, she's negative. But...
Pardon me?
She has started... Is this okay? Yeah. Take us out before the argument that I sit in the white room.
Session's done already.
Yes.
Well, you...
She does understand. They don't... They don't have the... They don't understand.
The problem is, mobile's not.
Yes.
He doesn't move the label, anyway.
He still... Listen, he still...
All right. We're ready for the wall.
Oh.
Oh. I love talking about it. They're great leaders. I love this. Thanks, guys. Today, we have... We're really gonna kind of zero in on the building. We've got some great information on the site plan, too. We want to bounce that off of you. And we want to just walk through the building. We've got all the models finished. We've got materials applied so that we can get your feedback on the materials. If you like it and there are no major questions, my next step is to take this, package it, go ahead and get it on out to my estimators, and then move into the more detailed phase of this, my wall sections, my mechanical systems, and so forth. So the objective today would be present the building to you, and you'll need to sync in with us. We understand that, and we accept comments. You know, if you think of something, two or three days from now, we understand. Give us a follow. The idea is to see, are we on track with this building imagery? Are we gonna tie it in to the City Hall? How we respond to the park across the street, and so forth. Jan, who has returned from the great Wild West, is going to be... Has been working on my FF... She's actually been in Montana. She's been working on the FFNE, the furniture fixture package, and in about... I think at the next meeting, it won't be as exciting as this one, but we'll probably be coming back to you with some ideas on the furniture package and some of those sort of peripheral packages. Probably our major budget review session will be, you know, that early August meeting, say around August 10th. We'll have our information back from our estimators. We'll have had a week or so to vet that information. What happens? We package it, we get it to our estimators, our estimators come back, and they're always high. They're always way high, because they assume, well, you got gold plated ductwork, don't you? And we go, no, we don't have gold plated ductwork. We don't have this. So there's a little bit of a back and forth with our estimators, and then we can bring it to you, having vetted it. And I'd say sometime around August, I think there's a meeting on August 10th. That would give us two or three weeks to get the detailed estimate done, and then about a week or so to vet it. Then we'll also be bringing in the FFNE information, the furniture fixture equipment information at that time, and then the information on alternative funding through Spark Fund, some of those ideas that we're gonna explore. Schedule is we're essentially on track. Probably lost a week or two through all this kind of COVID craziness and everything, but we're pretty much on track there. Still looking into September to try to hit the streets. I mean, if I'm in budget, y'all like it, all that sort of stuff. I mean, there's still some hurdles to jump, but we're on track schedule-wise. So the idea now is, we're gonna let Jared and Mike kind of walk through the building. And this is, again, this is a conversation, not a presentation, so stop any point. Any positive comments are welcome. No negative. All constructive comments are welcome. And consider this just a conversation. So Jared?
Yeah. Me and Mike will probably go back and forth, but kind of start off big picture, look at the site again, kind of update you on some of our, you know, discussions with civil engineers and some of the things that have come up with them. And we ordered borings. Those were ordered, I think they were out there maybe a week ago or so. We're expecting that back this week. That'll get our structural engineers moving on that. It's just kind of kicking up grainy land, you know, dollar grapes to civil. You know, really across the building, that's the building. You know, we've got... Currently, we have about six-foot grade between here and here, and then another two-foot grade change between here and, say, here currently. We're trying to set this building as high as we can. We're setting it 609, which 609 is kind of right here. So fairly, you know, we want all this to be level. We want all this to be level. Ideally, the, you know, kind of most affordable structural system would just try to give us this slab of grade. So we're looking at burping all this up, hopefully getting a lot of this dirt from onsite. This plan, we've kind of reviewed and modified, but this plan, we needed another 20,000 square cubic yards of dirt. I think we've made some modifications to get that down there, and we're hoping to take some structural fill from the site. Currently, we've talked about moving the waste management to a longer piece here that actually makes the length of the site, being able to collect more water along the side. This is really a berm right here, so that's kind of perfect to redirect this water back and like that, have the outlet go, you know, at this little spot here. That will cut down on some of this. Parking-wise, you know, we kind of did an occupancy count. You know, this is something to discuss. We kind of set, you know, you have the event where you have 1,200 people, the graduation. We kind of set, looking at the standard, the occupancy load being, say, a large banquet in the big space for, say, parking. And, you know, we talked about parking. You know, when you do have a large space, you're gonna kind of create, be able to kind of maybe park through here, gravel as needed, you know. Plumbing counts, they're kind of needing more of that banquet requirement. So, you know, if this was a banquet here, you know, 15 square foot per person, that's a 400-person banquet. You know, in our little diagram, we're showing like 350, so worst case, that's 400 people, and then additional 50 in catering and other spaces. So we're looking at 450-person occupant load. That would require like 158 parking spaces. Currently, right here in the kind of paid zone, is we are at 108. This gravel back is another 68. So total, with the gravel, we're at like 183. So that definitely exceeds our requirement, not including City Hall, which I think is another 29 spots. So we feel like we're in good shape, you know, if not over. Talking to civil, another option was to go ahead and go, this is so wide, and maybe the function of that wide road is not what it needs to be now. Coming in here and actually striping parallel, turning this to a, you know, two-language parallel as needed, as long as possible.
The idea on Marco, if we could parallel park on Marco? Because I think the width is there for that. And then what that does is that that kind of buffers your sidewalk and your pedestrian traffic, so there's stationary cars in between, you know, the active cars and then the stationary cars, and we've got our landscaping and our sidewalks.
Slows down traffic.
Slows down the traffic.
Slows down the traffic, and it does a lot of positive things for us.
And cost-wise, it's just a paint. It's just a paint.
Yeah. So there's no real cost, and it kind of ties into some of the masterplan ideas for Marco, we believe. So I mean, it picked up, what, eight? Eighteen?
Yeah. It depends on how far you take it, too. You know, we can go, you know, we've got a lot of runway there, so, you know, we're... You know, there's a little inlet here that would get you water through, and it's just... So you're not collecting water, you know, you're not having all of this water come down here and this guy get flooded out. So we got little solutions like that, but we feel good about the grainy land. We're gonna try to pick up some onsite fill to kind of get us up high, but we really want this building to sit as high as possible.
If we can keep, you know, we got this great pile of filtered out here, and I know you're gonna need it to fill behind the curves, a pretty good bit of it, but any that you don't need, we need to keep as much as we can on the side. Yeah, we mentioned that.
That'd be super helpful.
And the other idea on the drainage that I think is real important is sheet drain as much as we can, so we don't have to have drainage structures and the cost of the structures, because we'd like every penny that we can, you know, to go into the building and so. But obviously, it still has to drain, and I think that, you know, Robin and his team have come up with a real good kind of concept for detention in the back of the site.
We're starting to work with landscape, with Robin, about, you know, landscape plan. This is really, I think what's working is kind of tree selection, how to kind of frame and set up different zones with different trees and frame, you know, to the highway. You know, we do have a power pole here, so these are definitely, you know, have to be low, different types of plants, so, you know. They're busy. We're kind of bouncing stuff back and forth as our building, you know, kind of footprint changes. I'm gonna go ahead and dig just into the plan and maybe update some of this maybe that I could just imagine. Okay. Again, entry approach, kind of, this gets a little distorted, but entry approach here, lobby, still very similar. Everything's very similar to kind of what we have. We just kind of started to dig in and kind of, well, as we go on, we'll kind of dig into all these zones and kind of zoom in. We still have mechanical back here. I... Kind of large utility discussions with our NTP consultances. Let's bring in main power back here to electrical room, put the transformer back here, bring the water for the fire pump riser back here. Now, that, these mechanical units are taking the majority of the electrical load, and then bringing in a sub-room for electrical here. But what that gets us is, you know, this now at gray, we're actually dropping, and you'll see this in the model, this whole mechanical yard is at gray, two storage rooms, and this is all now very nice and open. So this is still multipurpose, and we kind of, we can dig into the different possible functions of that. This is still catering kitchen and concessions. We've kind of closed that in, so it's very clear when you come in that this open counter is the reception, is not having these kind of two competing. You can kind of just staff that, close down the concessions when you're not using it, and it just feels like kind of an enclosed room. Office suite here, and then, you know, let's see. We... Kind of what has changed, we've kind of started to collect some of these spaces, water spaces, mainly to get as much multi-function into these, and we can kind of talk about what those spaces could be. Again, occupancy count, our median, our plumbing load, and we created two bathrooms here with two showers. We got rid of the showers in these, and kind of combined it into these family rooms, so you can have, you know, someone can come in, walk the door, single, and take a shower. Track is still very much the same, kind of up the elevator, track around, balcony still kind of overlooking this courtyard space. This currently is still kind of nearing what's happening over there to address the highway presence that we dig in. So, you know, we've talked about this, kind of the program of the large space with 350, possibly 400 banquet, and then graduation. We kind of wanted to dig into kind of this being the entry in these kind of spaces. So we've got, you know, the thought is that this space could be broken up into two multipurpose zones. This showing it all as one large multipurpose piece. Catering kitchen, you know, could service this here if that was just used for that, you know, that event.
Excuse me, I thought we were gonna help. Or would you divide that into two rooms?
Yeah. So right here is a, you know, sliding partition. This is just so it opens as one large room.
And we're... He's showing it right now as banquet, but that's, of course, fitness. I mean, you know, that's what that large storage room is for. We can move the mobile equipment in and out and kind of convert it for whatever use.
So, yeah, and this, this would be, so you could divide it here and get like, you know, these are actually the exercise bikes, right? With someone leading their class here. So you could set up, you know, a dozen, 16 bikes here, have a class, drop the divider, still do more of a kind of conference table and observers, or just a conference table, a large conference table in this, or, you know, and that kind of just telescopes in to a little slot there, makes it a similar larger. So, you know, the function of that, or all of this could be workout. You know, ideally, these, this space really wants to be something that's workout, that's a little bit more flexible, so these bikes can be kind of wheeled back to the very back storage. You know, if you have like heavy weights, you know, the free weights here, it may be harder to kind of move that stuff back and forth to storage. Present this is kind of this cabinet for, you know, TV control, lighting controls, and a little bit of storage here, a little bit of storage here for that space. But the question is, too, do you need a space that has more treadmills, heavier equipment? And that's where I think one of these other yellow spaces could double as a more permanent exercise room, you know? Or one, they could be like the kids' room. So we kind of moved this room here to be more incorporated into the lobbies, so you can come in. This is all kind of glass. This could be that kind of kid drop-off spot, or it could be more of a, you know, a permanent exercise room. And this as well could be, you know, kid drop-off or conference room, or the gaps of room. So we're trying to make these rooms a little larger for better flexibility here and here with... So that's really, I mean, I guess it's working through, it's adding a program for those pieces.
That's...
These would be collapsing.
Collateral.
Yeah. And we've kind of created a little wall here to kind of hide that edge, so from the lobby you're not seeing kind of this gym piece.
There are two rooms that you have, one of them has opposite sides.
What was it saying? This one's 315.
315 per feet.
Yep. And this one's 360.
It's about an 18-foot square on the top and at the bottom, like 12 by 22, 24, something like that.
And then this...
Maybe you might want to do racquetball, one of them. I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But both people about foot racquetball. Yeah.
Yeah.
Trip with racquetball would be the height.
Yeah.
Pushing the... You'd want to take the whole building a little taller if you did racquetball.
Oh.
But you're thinking right, and the whole point of coloring the plan with these different colors is to say, this whole building is, the function can change.
Yeah.
So the question or the comments about stationary bikes or furniture, are the kids going here? And it could be one way during the week. The weekend, it shifts gears, and then you're back into it the next following week. So, and I guess some of the feedback, and that's where John mentioned, just kind of bowling it over a little bit, is they, we can kind of shuffle these pieces around, but we think that they provide a few different looks at how you can use it. So that childcare area, which we're calling, what are we calling that?
This one.
Does it say? What's the name of that?
Childcare at the end, because that could open to an outdoor playground area.
Well, that's a question of, do you want childcare visible so that people can't get into the back door and knock? You don't want a door to the exterior if it's...
And we'll lock in on this, but my vote would be that that whole fitness area, you may want almost to lock in a certain portion of that fitness area for your weight training and the heavier stuff. You're not gonna really be able to move that around, and we've got our, you know, we've got our FFNE. I think they're coming in next week to really begin to lay out the details of that equipment. And then the mobile equipment also, so that we can use a portion of that for banquet, and maybe this becomes your, you know, an alternate banquet, meeting hall, any type of space. And then childcare here at the maze that could open to outdoor play areas and so forth. Or that maybe, you know, maybe we don't need that much space for childcare just yet. That's kind of what we're...
The advantage is, where you laid it out, it could be converted or changed.
Easily. Anytime. Right.
And that's the key. As things progress, things change, you say, well, I can move this room, let's take over the bigger room, move it around, and that's the opportunities that we have a lot of options.
And also, these have pretty adequate storage, especially this one. So if this is like kid stuff, you can throw it in here, close it down, now you pull a table in there.
Yoga class could be in there.
Yoga would be a great place for yoga class, again, because it opens to the exterior.
That's right.
Again, the two restrooms with the showers, and then kind of the admin area, you know, the idea is that kind of this long reception that people will kind of probably stay at the majority of the time for greeting. You can probably get two people there. And then kind of a divider wall that would kind of divide, you know, if staff is here and then you come in and print, or, you know, work through things. We've got a big work table, the other options to have, have, say, like a row desk, and this be a conference room. So, again, that's kind of working with you guys to understand what are the staffing needs, and how best to kind of orient those spaces. We could have a private office, and then have more of kind of functioning spaces, kind of printers and lots of stuff here, which is kind of nicely accessible through the front door. And then, you know, the thought is, there's different ways to kind of handle some of the function of the rec center. You know, are people coming and checking out balls and rackets and stuff from the desk if you haven't returned? And that's the kind of store here, or like, you know, if you have a big event, kind of big hoop closet. So trying to think through those things and what you're anticipating. We'll kind of dig into that.
The idea on the single, you know, just a single private office is, that open space office can, again, go multiple ways, but you like to have a place where your coaches can take over during summer program time. You've got a rendezvous point where they're printing off flyers, someone's coming in, they're organizing events, and it's just kind of a catch-all for anybody that needs workspace. And so you don't want that stuff out in the open, you don't want to, you know, you want to give space somewhere. And so whether that's open office space or semi-private, again, that's the red box there, just all flexibility. And even if you didn't decide not to use the open, the private office there, it's just as easily connected to the larger office space. So I think you've got, the goal being flexibility, not too many permanent walls, trying to keep... Essentially, if you were to take the furniture out, you have four big rectangular rooms. We've named them, we've put furniture in them based off their proximity to certain areas, but again, to Joe's point, it's, you know, middle of the week, it could be one thing. On a Saturday, Sunday, it could be different.
The other thing is something I was planning on doing, I was originally gonna build, was to use cubicles, but they make a cubicle wall that is actually movable. So we have an open space, you can cut it down, you can make it bigger, they make them eight, they make them even 10 foot.
Go all the way to the deck.
And you can literally store those at any time. They're just as easy to move, you know, a table and chairs. So that whole area there, you could utilize that in that way, even if you were to find a little bit more storage, maybe move that wall. So there's lots of options.
Yeah. And we like this being fairly open, too, so someone could be back here and still have the right for the puzzle. But then levels of security, so then this office could have a little bit more secure, maybe have closed cabinets, and you could, this be very dedicated to like really lock down secure stuff. So I think that's kind of how you could protect, you know? This being fairly open, people could still walk back here, but...
Correct.
So that's kind of big picture plan thoughts.
One quick question, I don't know what happened to that one, I walked in.
Right here. Yeah.
What does that look like? It wasn't running correct, over full view.
We are eight feet wide now.
Look at those.
That's eight feet right there currently.
Oh, eight foot.
And then you get these pockets of, you get these pockets of larger, this has structural columns aren't showing up, so it's still eight clear between that and the column. And then you have these smaller kind of breakout spaces here, here, of course, the corners, and here, you know, where either these people can go around or...
He puts a good check in. It's hard to tell that by the draw.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna get two good-sized walking tracks, plus 50% of the time, you're gonna have three or more feet besides you that's not a walking track.
Well, you get into experience on the safety issue, following the...
Yeah, that's... Yeah. Yeah, the two stairs, there's plenty of resting, I mean, little spots to pull off. And then the balcony. The balcony over here on the right side is also to address the future, you know, the price of Commons Park, we hope it'll happen someday. And you'll have a beautiful view from that second floor of the Commons area. But that's around 4,500 feet that we've added to the program, and so we had to be real careful on our other parts of the building, try to keep our, you know, 23,000, 24,000, you know, our target right then. So, you know, we got the elevator, you got the stairs, you know, then the balconies and so forth, so it's very comfortable. Plus, I think we can walk you down it, can't we?
We can.
We'll walk you down it.
That is a possibility. So, okay.
This was boring, son.
So this was more or less a refresher to get us coming up to speed. I think we've talked a lot about the plan, had several meetings on it. Today is about shifting back to, we kind of knew we had a big box and a small box, right? Our little administrative area, if I go back to the plan, you kind of see it. You've got your smaller, single-story, we'll call it the administrative multi-function wing, and then you've got your big box, which is your 26-foot clear, big-span auditorium space. And so we deal with those two boxes a little bit differently, and I'll show you that in a minute. But one thing that you'll notice is, you know, this box, when you're in this multipurpose space, this courtyard is the object of your focus. We want it to be. We want it to be where all the light is. It needs to feel good when you're in there. And equally with this space, we've got, we give you a couple options where we do focus up towards the front, but we also push your view out to the courtyard. With the back of the building, we like to think we don't have too many backs to the building, but, you know, I would consider this the back of the building where we have a lot of mechanical functions, where we kind of have a strategy how to make that still good-looking, but still, it's the back of the building. But the side or the back of the administrative wing, again, lends itself to a little bit of a courtyard feel, where that third multipurpose space can spill out onto there. And then when you're upstairs, you know, the question is, how do you express a huge gym box? You know, you kind of want to give people a sense of this fun, creative thing, but it's just, it's an enormous box. So you'll see in some of the renderings we have, we're really counting on these balconies as a design element that allows us to just give you a window or a big moment where we say, okay, there's this big box, but here's its, here's the front door. Here's, you know, like John said, this is, this box is addressing the future park, and while the park isn't in existence now, it very much feels like the front yard of the building, even though we have, we have, this is a secondary front entrance, this is the main front entrance into the building, but it's also your focal point from City Hall. So we've got two fronts to the building, and I'll kind of, I'll come back and refer to these when I'm walking you, when I'm walking you around the building. So here's a, I'm gonna bounce around a lot, and I want to hear what y'all think, because we've labored a lot over material choices, the form of the building. When I say the form, I just mean the shape. I don't know why they start calling it form in architecture school, but it's the shape of the building. What we feel like as an office is, this City Hall's important to us. We positioned the building, our building, at the angle of City Hall, so it's to say, hey, we're in agreement, City Hall was here first. These two operate together, whether it's a rec center, a community center, an event hall, anything, we want to acknowledge these two. So City Hall is brick, so we feel like as a rule, you know, it's a big building, right? So you don't want a big brick building. But brick's important to us. So I think just as a rule, when I show you these images, just know that our material palette is, let's pull some of the brick across. And I think we're saying literally, or pretty close to it, we'd want to match City Hall's brick. So think of bringing some brick over, but also, we gotta have a lot of glass at our big, important moments. But we're not building a glass box, because that's too much glass that's unnecessary. So those are, that's the kind of logic. I think we've thrown in some metal panel. I think sometimes that can be derogatory, but metal panel, and it's just, we're so creative with it these days, and it's synonymous with rec centers and just bigger buildings like this. So we have an interpretation. We're excited about it, but let me get all the way through and then just get y'all's feedback and have a constructive conversation about it. So this is a view, if you're over at the park that John's talking about, this is your view across the street. So this is the courtyard of the building. And the idea here, it's a little, it's a little kind of dark and squashed, but, you know, I'm gonna do something. I'm gonna go COVID mask, I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk this in front of y'all. Can I do that, or is it gonna unplug it?
That's kind of...
I'm gonna do this. I think your value is better. That's okay.
The proportions are getting...
Just the proportions. So, yeah, I think that'll, I'll keep my mask on. So those are the, those boxes are the expression of the program on the inside. We are, there's lots of ways to articulate, to articulate the forms of it.
Oh, that doesn't...
But...
They have a lot of them there.[1793.12] It's definitely longer than it is taller.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. You have to, you have to be careful with this big of a building, it's tough to break the scale there. But we're, but we're also doing it with an intensive budget. And so like I said, we're not building a large box, not that that would even be appropriate. I think, I think brick is, we value it for this building, I think should be valued, you know, in the next one.
Well, in the building in my mind, it has.
Mine.
It has two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Charles came in, I'm sorry. But the building in our mind has two different scales. The front side that'll face the future park is what I'd call an urban scale. It's going to be a larger scale, so the big window is kind of, you know, if you're standing back in the park, the big window looks like a small one.
That's when you're driving by.
That piece of the building addresses the scale of the park.
This is just.
The other entry that faces City Hall is more of a pedestrian scale, more of a human first man scale.
Focus on the.
So you've got these two.
You want glass, you want it to feel fun. Trying to get some energy in there, but respect the brick. Here's a up closer shot of the courtyard.
Respect the brick.
Yeah, it, it, yeah.
Some of the shapes can, can be looked at as, as more modern, but we're trying to, we're building a rec center, you know, we're building a big building, you know? So this is, this is just zoomed in. Now, and the idea also being at night, like you're, you're talking about, you're focusing your glass onto the courtyard, which is if you're going to have glass, use it to light up, you know.
We call that a lantern, like it'll glow, this building will glow at night so that again, from the commons, when the commons park is in there and it's active and all that, there'll be this beautiful glow across the street, electrically your eye across the street.
Still got a lot to develop, but in here, you look at plaza lighting. You got to be able to.
Oh, yeah.
If you're going to have a wedding reception up here, and it's also a place for summer programs or kids.
Yeah, like at U A V, you know, going down, down to Birmingham, the one at U A V that, and it kind of forms a gateway too. It's an interesting.
So, yeah, so now I'm going to show you, go on. Now I'm going to show you the City Hall side. What, the, the idea being here is we're starting to develop a language, which is when we have kind of this lower brick box, we're pushing into it. And, and we're trying not to be too harsh with the metal panel colors. And so currently, the, the, the concept on the table is the big box is a lighter kind of silver metal. But then when we cut into the brick, it's kind of like that we would use more of a brick colored, rose colored, kind of softer color panel, which helps the building kind of read as one thing. And it helps it not be so loud or, you know, there's lots of different words. But let me just show you, and I'll, I'll actually open up the model here. So if you're walking from here over to the rec center, you're going to walk over and we're going to put glass right in front of you. And, and give you this, we're, we're going for big scale. So you're talking sixteen feet in the air and this big metal panel kind of slows and you've got a big plaza area out front. And the whole point is you're, you're, again, you're creating another plaza where kids can wait for, wait for their parents, hang out. You want to keep them on the street. You know, so we don't want brick to feel like the seventies, right? When we used the brick, but we want it to feel.
We struggled. It was, we were going, that looks like a nineteen sixties line C A.
But I think the, you know, this is very important that we see this as, as metal panel. And so this is a more modern material, but we're giving it kind of respecting the color and the texture of the brick. It's so as to, you know, not, not like the brick, the ugly stepchild. But again, this, you're talking about something like this, if it was not COVID nineteen, we'd have V R goggles on y'all and you could stand and hopefully we'll get there. But, but it's, you're talking about a big opening, it's sixteen feet tall, that feels and captures your presence, makes a very decisive courtyard move because it's, it's not the courtyard of the building that faces the street, but it's coming from City Hall, it's a pretty important point of.
So all these outdoor spaces are real important to the way this building is going to function because you're going to have a lot of courtyards, a lot of outdoor activities, picking up, dropping off, you know, with the, you know, with the daycare or with the yoga class. That'd be a great place, by the way, for a yoga class or a, you know, a, you know, a softer aerobic kind of function back there.
And then the last picture is, you know, we've got four fronts to the building. We kind of say hi to the interstate, we kind of say hi to City Hall, we kind of say hi to the front. And, you know, we're, we're kind of turning to the side over here for right now, but we'll treat it, we'll treat it nicely. But on the interstate side, you're, you're talking about, you're interacting with something far off. So that's where our, that's where our big box move kind of says, let the metal, you got to let the metal panel be what it's going to be. But let's be creative with, with the coloring of it, maybe maybe bring in some soft tones on the metal panel. And that's where you get your signage, whatever signage.
We can get some beautiful, like a city logo, we can get some beautiful signage.
Well, you see some buildings with things that split away.
With a big punch.
Right. Yeah, it'd be beautiful, but with the city logo up here, the, you know, city of priceable, you know, that standoff text.
You can talk about a big box, we're trying to break it down, but it's sometimes on the, on the back on the interstate side, it's like, hey, I am this big. You know, and we're, we're, we're not selling, we're selling off short at the moment because we want to get into the interiors and show you how this focused on the outside is, is just as powerful. Being on the walking track and, and being in that big box and looking out is just as important as people on the street looking in. And also.
We've also talked about the metal panels, maybe similar color, but one, one's more glossy, one's more flat. To give it, break up that scale to get more of the, the brick scale as well.
And we've got a, are you going to walk through the model?
I'm going to pull it up.
This is going to be just.
We'll downgrade again here.
You've got one more on the far side where the rest of the land is, but that side of the block. It'd be that one out.
No, 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 we're going to walk you around it.
I'll walk you around it.
It's, it's our mechanical.
I'll walk you around it. You're going to see, we're wrapping the rec singles, so we're, we're keeping the mechanical yard low. One of the earlier schemes, we had the big package units on the roof and we're, we're actually just going to screen them completely and kind of keep.
We're going to bring those back units back down, you know, so you don't have the elevated maintenance issue and the whatever. We think it'd just be easier to take care of. But that's an important elevation, like I said, there's no backside to this building. Because that's going to be a future hotel one day, whatever that site's going to be. You know, y'all, y'all are real clear that this is very valuable property. We know how valuable that property is as well, and so we're trying to, but then, well, we'll, we'll see. What, just to some degree disregard the proportions? I don't know, somehow this is not, it's not coming out the right proportion, but it'll give you a, it will give you a sense of what it's going to feel like to be in the building.
We're going to try to fix the proportions here.
And we got V R, it's just, you can't do V R and COVID all at the same time. But, I mean, you could put the goggles on and you could technically walk through the building and look up, see the ceiling, look down, see the floor. Because we want you to understand the interior and the exterior experiences.
Hold on, let's try one more.
This is a long way from the overlay draft thing that I learned. We thought, we, we, the coolest thing, when, when I got out all.
The interstate view is probably one of the most important views. We get enormous.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that is the interstate, that, that window wall addresses the interstate. But we were thinking we could get a big, you know, the city seal or. Or just, you know, priceable, just.
Okay, no success. That's okay, we'll just, I'll, you know, I'll be okay, we'll just kind of, you'll have to interpret with what you saw a minute ago. Oh, yes. So Joe, your comment.
There you go.
Here's what you're talking about. So, you know, what's kind of exciting here is, is that big, this big move of this box coming over top of the brick. And then we're talking about putting the brick, running the brick into those, you know, we wouldn't put champagne colored doors on the first one, but we'll make them the brick color. But again, we're just trying to, between trees, brick and metal panel, it should be very clean. You know, our generators are mechanical, all that's going to go behind the brick screen that you're not seeing. Because we really, the whole point of pulling back was to make this land marketable. And sellable, and so you won't have cooling towers sitting, you know, in somebody else's front lawn that's on back here.
It doesn't have, what you're saying is on the back, it's a lot of buildings from down front to back. In fact, it's a little bit of thing you can see.
Yeah.
And, and agree, what we want to create is, is something that looks good all the way around. So that doesn't have that industrial look on the back end.
And some of, yeah, some of this brick may be, you know, maybe fairly open where you're getting some airflow and different patterns.
This gives you a good, so these are our two, you know, we, we need these in the middle because you're going to be running your ducts into the middle of the space. And then we've got our big kind of mechanical and storage on the sides. And if I come over here, this is where it's like playing a video game for a minute. So I guess what, what we hope you're seeing is the product of, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to develop a language for the building.
Well, that building in twenty years still be, this building's twenty, and this still looks like it's in time with everything else. Do you think that will be that in twenty years from now, that it'll still?
If we're still playing basketball, yeah. And we're having events, it's, it's the, a couple of things, the brick is important to us. And I think that these two will track together always because of just, it's kind of like going onto a college campus. When they've got five or 10 years of rogue, rogue materials on a college campus, they always try to rein them back in because stuff starts to not look the same. And so Auburn is a good example of buildings take on a lot of different shapes at Auburn, but they constrain the materials a little bit to brick and glass and X. You know, there's, there's usually two or three materials. And in, in my opinion, as you, as, as we challenge other architects to do complementary pieces around City Hall and around this rec center, material and tones are going to always be important. I mean, that, you know, there may be an appropriate wild job at, at some point, but I don't think that's what we're saying would be appropriate here.
And these aren't, these aren't shapes because we think they're cool. These are shapes that have a real important meaning and reason for being there. And so it'll always be important to have, have the, you know, the pocketed entry here, you know, that responds to the park, responds to the drop off.
And this is, this is an important view here. You, you're, the building is set back from this drop off because you just, you got to imagine if it's a pre-function space for an event or it's a drop off for kids, it's just, the entry to the building begins before you're inside the building. So we've got a courtyard, it's, it's, and again, it's, it's a, some interpretation required. We've got a little more work to do, this is our first pass. And so we, we haven't put all the time to get the fancy lights in and show how it's a finished space. But we really would like to see this as a space where people can hang out and, and wait for a bus ride and wait for their car. And then on the interior, let me do that, I'm a, I'm a, again, this is getting too, can I show anything on the exterior? Just to, for, for people to understand it, or can I unplug and bring you the interiors? I'm going to, I'm going to disconnect again, we'll just keep.
Those proportions aren't.
We'll keep with our hybrid.
The proportions are not quite right.
And we'll, we'll, we've got a projector that's, that's a proportion for this type of thing, we can easily bring up next time. These are static images. And again, interiors is a, is a different animal, we've got a lot of work to do on interiors. But just in terms of some of the, what the, what the plan is already giving us, you can start to see things. A lobby space where you've got, you're, you're most likely, so you just walk through.
It'll be a pre-function, it's a lobby slash pre-function because, we're having a big banquet or a big gathering. Yeah, that'll be a great pre-function space. And that's why we like it spilling out on that big terrace too, because you could have a great, you know, if you've got a graduation or whatever ceremony, there's a lot of, a lot of places, a lot of pre-function spaces and other places that you could. Right, that glass is really going to.
It makes it larger.
Right. And it, and if just one or two people are in there at some point in time, they don't feel lost, they don't feel, you know, it has to work at two scales.
You just kind of like, if you're walking through the, the door from City Hall, lot to be added, but this idea that let's punch into the gym with some kind of fun material, show some glass. And then this is a, you know, you could be at standing tables with cocktails because it's a pre-function for a wedding or it's rug res, you know. And again, this should be the same language.
Think of it almost as a big pre-function area because really, we're thinking this building. Yeah, y'all might, I'm wondering if y'all are going to use this as much for, you know, gatherings, social gatherings as you do for basketball, as, you know. Yeah. Hopefully there'll be just continuous activity.
Yeah, we'd like to see people have this also.
Right.
It gives us the ability to have multiple opportunities.
If you turn to the right, you're wondering what service you're seeing.
Doing our own.
Doing something. So, so we just came in this way. This is the, the multi-purpose room off to the right, and it's currently got the divider walls.
That's a good question. Yeah, it was through that right now, but we probably need to find a place through that service area that we could bring in. No, no, the back, it's.
It's shown as double doors, but yeah, those could be, those would be roll doors.
It needs to have height and, yeah. A lot of times what gets you is the height.
Yeah, maybe width.
Yeah, the height too. Those boats and then. You've got to bring a lift in, you know, we're going to be doing lighting, we're going to, you know.
So we want people to know they're in a rec center. And we want to, we, glass is not, we're not going to use glass everywhere, but when we use glass, use it for what it's for, which is just ultimate transparency. And, and when it comes to the fun pieces of programming that we're going to use this building for, we use glass to go with it.
It'll size you, see, all the way down the hallway through the lobby, through that glass to the part across the street.
That's what the interstate's for. I'm kidding.
Get it, get it.
No.
So what about the quality of the glass? I mean, we're, we're going to have a lot of kids around going in and out of this. How long is it going to last with scratches and stuff like that before it starts?
It's very high performance glass, it's insulated, it's, you know, it's glowy, it's, it's just a very high performance material. And we're probably use, you know, the, the fretting on it so that you can see that it's glass. You get the transparency, but you just won't walk into it. But it's a, it's real, it's laminated, it's safety glass, it's, it's made for that exact application. That's a good question because we, we spend a lot of time working on it.
No. Just like. Do you buy great is self-playing glasses?
That is like. You know, the exterior glass is, they call it self-playing because the line. Unfortunately, we're hoping it doesn't rain inside. We'll, we'll flash the building.
We'd like it to be great, Texas too, where they can pour now, or did they pour now?
Talking about the kids around here. The drop off.
The larger room right off the lobby. You know that they can do chalk here. I like that larger, I like the fact that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Everything that goes in. Whenever, whenever the program is settled, whichever childcare room, they, they'll do that whenever the program is settled, whichever, only if they have childcare, they'll do that.
Yeah, well, that's a good.
I like it being very, very good on the lobby.
That's right.
For safety reasons, yes.
And most of the dentures that we have these days, you know, you've got the camera system, so you can pull it up on your telephone, and see what's going on.
Also, we'd like to have a driveway too, too.
Maybe if there's a day-long session.
On the roll-up door, because you ever have, you know, cars or boat show, would there be enough space? Is this the basic building between the air conditioners or?
I think you would go, I think you'd go two, two lined up and go through the storage room. The storage room is pretty large.
Okay.
I think you'd go through one, two, one there. What's that?
In the high ceiling.
Yeah, that's like sixteen feet.
So we'd have to take a driveway around. We have, what about access?
Right now, we're showing gravel, curb to gravel.
Right.
Say the one closest to the room.
The one closest maybe where we can get the roll-up.
There's gonna be some great stuff we gotta work out there too, which were over the building's kind of perch there.
That's something that we talked about in the past, you know, you might have a gun show, some of them wanted to take some boats from our.
Yeah, yeah, and on the Albrook project, they had done a real nice twelve-foot roll-up door, but it, it was like eight feet tall or something, and you couldn't, the height is just, was just about as important as, as the width when we're bringing all this up. Talking Charles, we're just talking about that.
They got a scissor lift, you know, to get the lights.
Yeah. There's a fair amount of maintenance with, well, you know, you got LED lighting, but hopefully there's not too much maintenance, but when you need to get to it, you need to get to it, so you gotta bring lifts in.
Access doors, they'll be important.
Right. Especially for the multipurpose.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not that schooled yet. Every time I look at this face like this, as a dad of a two-year-old, I'm like, where's he gonna hit his head? Can he hit his head there? Is he gonna be okay after he hits his head there? Am I gonna be in the hospital?
How quickly we're gonna be emergency.
Okay, well, that, this is fun, this should be fun, we, you know, we'll package this up in a way that you all have things to look at. But it's also real serious, because it's a, you know, it's a new thing we're building.
You don't want to walk all the way through it? You don't wanna walk all the way through it, even though the proportions are?
Yes.
Yeah, I can do that.
We can walk y'all through it, y'all excuse the proportions or just disregard the proportions in that part, right? And next meeting, we'll just bring, we've got a projector and a screen that has the right proportions to it, and, and we can, we'll just project it, and we can see it in writing.
This was that plaza, I was saying. Yeah, I'll try to be slow, bounce around a little bit, but, you wanna turn in?
Will that be all concrete or will you ask?
Oh, we'll break it up, yeah.
We're gonna break it up, yeah.
The, generally speaking, if we have a big plaza area where we want it to be a hundred percent walkable, it'll either be grass, some sort of aggregate paving, and then gravel and concrete, because concrete is usually the most expensive, but also harsh on your eyes, too reflective, and.
Lot of glare.
It's just a lot of glare. So our next round will be to kind of really dive in and show more specific design vignettes of, of each of those spaces, using, yeah, let's say, grass, gravel, and concrete. This is a good example of, you know, you're seeing the gymnasium over here, you're seeing whatever function goes in here, whether it's.
And Karen, you're bringing up a good point, if we wanted to do childcare there where it's really visible and whatever, you know, and it's cleanable glass.
And you got a hallway, you have to have hallways in a building.
Clean the glass. It's safety glass.
All of us in here in this room almost bend to some kind of travel ball, and then the kids that's not playing are playing in the halls and they're.
Well, they usually don't trust you said, they don't have anywhere to go.
Yeah.
You know, you can create an opportunity now, and yet the proportion is off, just not true, said that the proportions are off.
Yeah.
The hallway's eight feet wide.
It's thirty six inches wide.
It's like, John, I'm trying to pass it so that we're gonna get stuck here.
Remember when you used to make three-foot court?
I agree.
Yeah, it was like really wild, we were trying.
Just for, just for argument's sake, let's see if I can, if I can do the math, these proportions are.
Longer than half.
Longer than half. Let's try this one. We'll try a couple, and then I'm gonna just tuck my tail and quit. All right. We're gonna, well, let's, listen, now we're squashing it the other way, look how wide this is over here. That's still covered, okay. But the concept here is transparency, multi-function space, but then to understand that this is really part of the lobby, just because it's down this hallway, you have a face that addresses the public, and then this is, you're always gonna have a step down, you're gonna have an accessible counter somewhere in that, but then everything else is gonna be lifted up a little bit, so that this could be a counter where you can have, you know, you gotta, you feel like some of the questions you're gonna feel are gonna be from the coaches and the parents and the boosters and the people, they're gonna wanna know, well, where's my workspace? Like, how can I help when it comes to the educational, you know, if you look at this building, having a private and a public and a more of an educational component, and a rec league travel ball component, I guess each of those categories will have different people that need to access space to, for prep and things. You know, coming down this hall, and then, anyway, it's a hallway right now.
We like to have glazing at the end of hallways too, where we can, it's a preference because it brings that daylight in, it makes the.
Because if you're at the end of the hall, you know, you're back to, here's your conference room that looks out to a nice courtyard and your news.
But like I said, what a perfect place for yoga or.
You gotta put one oak off something.
You put your.
I mean, that'd be a tricky place to.
Is it freezing off, is another thing they go on?
That's, that's.
That's an easy, easy thing to add to that.
Yeah, very inexpensive.
I know most of the places, it's got a, just a driving range, I don't know how big it is, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring you the laptop.
I'm trying to follow you through the, down the hallway, I'm like, oh, okay, see where I am.
You've got that whole, that whole area out there.
Right in the lobby.
Yes, yeah, so I did a quick.
Yeah, even if there's this placeholder to a hotel combs or whatever.
You went down the hall and you turned.
We gotta make another, another twenty forty plan, and a lot of people asking for a flash map, and I might even be a bad place somewhere out there.
That'd be a, a great place for it.
I know, they're really expensive, they're upkeep.
We've, we've done a bunch of them.
I've done some great.
And they are, we've got a beautiful one going in Albrook right now.
This right here?
But they're almost kinda fun to.
Metal panels, they're up to a window.
To put out. It's almost like a fountain.
And, and in the food prep area, you come through this door, and this food prep area can operate, you know, to serve this room, or the divider wall is in here right now, I didn't explore it about it.
That's the fitness area, of course, overlooking the court and how important within that corridor.
And then, you know, you come out this door, and you're accessing the elevator lobby, and you're into the gym.
Is that gonna be electrical or hydraulic?
It'll be hydraulic.
It's twelve feet. The balcony's twelve feet, so just once.
Yeah, we are having the two small courts on that large.
Yes, sir, yeah, we can turn, we can turn both ways where it can play.
Yeah, I just, I didn't see it marked up.
Yeah, we don't have the markings yet.
We guys have, we can show one at a time.
This is, we are not suggesting dark ceiling treatment of the interior yet, so just kind of, squint when you look at this space, because we haven't spent too much time.
So disregard the proportions and disregard the.
Don't look at anything. But again, I think this just tells the story of the floor plan, saying, you need to, the lobby is always a part of your experience, no matter where you're at in the building, and that's important, because the lobby's kind of the heart and the access point of all of these, you know, several functions pendulum off of that lobby as they.
Only tall, skinny people are allowed.
Fifty pound or less, occupancy load.
That's the small seating.
That's right.
Yeah, who's recommended by our internal medicine. All right. What we will do is, we, we've got a proportional projector, and we can bring that on our next visit, so you can, and there'll be a lot of refinement too, to the final selection of proposed materials and that sort of stuff, and, and we can walk through this anytime, because the idea here, what we, we want to make sure that you know is exactly what we're proposing, exactly what it's gonna look like, exactly what it's gonna feel like being in there, so y'all, this is a major investment for the city, and we want you to know everything you can possibly know about this building, so.
Did y'all look at out there, where you got the people walking, did y'all look at maybe some type of lighting out there?
Oh, on, on the plaza?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, two types, there's really kind of three, three types of lighting, we're gonna have lighting down Marco, and we need to talk about that, because once we pick something, that's gonna kind of go all the way down Marco for a long time, then there's parking lot lighting, and then there's our plaza lighting, it's both the courtyard, you know, at the, at the front of the building facing future priceful commons, and then at the, at the courtyard at the pedestrian entrance itself, but that'll be well lit.
Well, I know, but it's just something, we thought, well, Collins, we thought, up Marco to this point, we have streetlights in the middle of the street, and I don't think, they didn't design, y'all didn't design anything, the streetlights in the middle, I don't think we need to out there.
Streetlights in the middle of Marco? Is Marco divided, do we have a median coming down?
Yeah, to the hotel.
Well, there's one coming, you know, actually come up, but obviously, when the downtown starts, there'll probably be some type of median per se, like, I think even in Providence, there's a, there's somewhat of a.
A median's a nice, I mean, that's a nice.
When you're crossing the street, you're gonna have to have a spot for people to be in the middle state.
Right, right.
And so, yeah, you probably would do some type of lighting down the middle of the Marco Drive as you move forward, and, and probably on the walk side.
So the reason we didn't come on with it from when we extended it down to here, is because we didn't have to cut it too many downs.
Yeah.
We said, let's just leave it.
Just leave, yeah.
Yeah, and right now, that's exactly what it is.
Yeah, because you've got plenty of room for the, for the median that, you know, in the master plan, you could have, you know, we could do lighting.
We built it that way, didn't we? We make sure there's enough room for median and whatever needed to be done.
We'll talk to our engineers about that, because we're gonna have sidewalks, so we need to make sure the sidewalks are well lit, and you got the median, and, you know, we need to, that strategy that we develop on this project, I think will be important to you, because you're gonna be applying that to a lot of future projects, so.
Well, as you move forward with the downtown, you want it to all be consistent, you don't want it to be like, okay, here they built that, and oh, over here they built that, I mean, you know, Disney World has, uh, Universal and not Universal, let's get one egg.
It's got.
Yeah, you wanna feel like you're in the same area versus people in every different country.
We're getting a little bit closer too, and I think Jason's gonna start working on the sun and in the subdivision regulations.
And we can picture that in there.
And what you're saying, we gotta get something better, if walk gas is not bad, it wasn't bad for the twenty years, but what we gotta do is improve for the next twenty years.
And keeping in mind a couple things, number one, there'll be many types of lighting, not just one type, because you got vehicles, you got parking, you got sidewalks, you got, and so as we develop these schemes, there'll be a lot of different, well, three or four major different systems probably to be recommended. The other thing that, that we might wanna talk about too is just the graphics, the exterior signage, and how that might be applied not only in this building, but at some point, y'all might wanna be looking at that, it, 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 a signage program for the entire city is probably in your master plan now, at least as a recommendation.
That's gotta be done in the master plan, because I brought it up in the nap.
Yes, sir.
You go to verbal leave, or not verbal leave, to build a head.
Right.
Everybody signs at about the same time.
Right, we're doing a very detailed signage study for, for Auburn right now, for the city of Auburn right now, and, you know, from the interstate to, you know, how do you get people to park in Dex and so forth.
They can buy the billboards and print, get them into here, but when we get them into here, we'd like to have a sixty-five percent sign up there somewhere.
Right, yeah.
Well, I think as you guys work closer to getting what you're done, you know, obviously, you know, Jason or Gabe, he has to kind of work with him as well.
Yeah, we've talked to Justin a number of times.
I know you talk to him all the time, so.
Well, we wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, because the last thing we wanna do is, we deliver you an apple, and they come in here with an orange.
Right.
And have this building respond to the park, you know, that's, that's one of the main, that's why we like the fact that it's got that two-story volume, because it will really make a strong statement, and it'll anchor the park, the future park.
Of course, you know, on the back side, where all the grass is, to me, it would be awesome, as we start to move forward, and there might be a hotel at some point down there, is there a way to put some type of projector-type things where you could actually have a movie in the park off the side of the building?
Take a drive-in?
Yeah.
Well, even that, if you know where people are there, if we do have the downtown, once it comes, where they can walk across and still kind of be at the event center, but on the back side, you know, you've got an area where you can do movie night, and to where they could actually, the families could come, they could bring their own chairs, whatever, blanket, and watch a, a movie.
We'd like that, almost, sort of those trees there in Big Park.
Yeah. How cool would that be too, from the interstate?
Well, I mean, that, yeah.
You know, I mean, seeing all that activity.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm saying, there is an opportunity for people to be able to do something after they go eat, and create like, you know, an area for people to have.
Wasn't that, was that logo was gonna go down?
Boy, you could, you could do a logo there. We're talking, you've got.
We could project the logo.
If I walk on the ground to the top, this is what, fifteen, sixteen feet?
Yeah, that's a huge, yeah.
Yeah, you might project.
Twenty-two, isn't it? Not what you said.
Yeah, I thought about to the, the very third floor.
Yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen to the top of this brick parapet over here, twelve feet to the first floor, so that's twelve feet right there on the.
That's a pretty good screen.
Yeah.
But yeah, you.
And is it, that parking lot grade down?
Well, no, yeah.
Yeah, all this is gonna be a lot lower, I don't know what elevation the interstate, if it comes back.
That must be you want to sit at the building and put a string.
This'll be fun, this'll be fun at night, when you're, when you're, you know, your rec center, I mean, this is silly, but, you know, if you're coming to our thing at night, you know, it's gonna give you just this big punch read into.
One on the right's not calling you, that would be.
Yeah, it's, this is a.
What about the other side? It'll be facing maybe the future development. I guess that will. Just a big brick side.
Yeah, we haven't done the exterior lighting studies yet on this.
Again, we have plaza lighting also, it's a, you know.
Some more technical aspects, we kind of talked with our consultant, Thomas, generator, you know, kind of explained him the situation, it seemed like he was referencing, you know, well, the building's probably not gonna be a, a disaster in the moment, it'll be a post-relief. He was suggesting like a quick release, you know, you can do all this quick connect, pull on a portable generator, whoever's side, and quickly could hook that up.
Would y'all?
If you knew that, that means that you might have to call somebody in to do it. You know, that for cash generator, I hear the name, it's almost nothing.
So you lost the price of generator, a permit generator?
Well, we can give thirty thousand for that.
And then?
No, I'm teasing, I think it was more than that, but.
I mean, we could do it as a.
No, that's, you know, but that, that fits with the Spark Fun thing, and all that works in, and.
Well, it saves somebody from having to do all that stuff.
It saves somebody from having to do all that, and then you, you know that you, that it's here, and there's a safe, if power's out for a couple days, there's an air. an air conditioning building that everybody can come to.
I think the next step is how big is it and why is it running? You're probably not running, you're just going to run some lights as well.
Emergency lights.
Emergency lights.
Yeah, it's probably, but just enough to have it as an emergency situation and then the, what the quick connect allows you to do is if you want to bring it online for long-term disaster relief, then you can upgrade the generator by having a truck pull up and say, hey, we can run air conditioning for the entire gym box for two weeks if it's a tornado, you know, if it's a disaster relief scenario.
We could also have them run the ACs and the admin, you know, level one story talks too and see what.
I can, I can see that that, that's the use sometime we have forty-eight downstairs with Katrina this stadium. Coldwood? Uh, you, they'll be here a long time. But we'll get them, they're fed every day. Of course, the community jumps in and donated food and all that stuff. Some of them, they stay here and never move back. Or you all, you know.
Yeah, but we, we, we'll, we'll talk about the emergency generators and the, and what those options are, but it might be, Tommy, we might want to think a little bit more than just the lighting. Lighting for sure, we know we'll have lighting, but we wanted to pick some areas for air conditioning and make sure, if you needed some kind of emergency relief capability, it would be easy to build that in right now.
Cafeteria is something I want to put that on.
Yeah, you've got a warming kitchen here. Right.
And then kind of digging into, you know, and this is what we can, can you think about? I think having some of the, actually, you know, a manager of the building would be right there understanding like security access, all those kind of things, digging in to who has access where and when.
Probably about roughly midpoint construction is when you're going to start thinking about bringing on maybe the director, maybe an assistant director or, you know, we haven't timed line that yet, but we'll all sit down and work that, that timeline together. But in the meantime, it's, you know, all of us, we, based on our experience and your experience, we need to go ahead and make, we'll make decisions about, you know, the security and some of these other, how we're going to check you in, how you can check out a basketball.
So advanced, there's so many things you can do to hit a button, lock every door in your house, even if you're out there, open up the garage, the way we're going, turn the AC up and down.
All control systems.
Top building, you got a little over.
What do you want?
If your family's in the backyard and they don't know that you're, you know, you're calling, so you get on the camera and you say, hey, I'm trying to call somebody, why don't y'all pick up the phone? You're saying, because that's not my house right now, I'm not going to do about anything. Somebody's ringing the bell and I was at my office and they're all in the back of the pool, so I said, I'm going to get to the front door. I'm wearing a pool.
But we're really excited about how this is going to tie in with City Hall. We're going to, we're developing a complex now and hopefully this is going to really set the table for Adam and the developers that he ultimately brings in across the way. Be a great catalyst for, for getting the commons going.
And there's refinement that you'll see as we kind of progress through this, refinement of interior spaces, refinement of exterior spaces. I think this is a, this is kind of a benchmark to say we're on the right track, keep plowing ahead. And, you know, and then also continuing our benchmarks of presenting and showing you, we'll show you all the spaces that we just showed you all over again every time we come because there'll be development, there'll be refinements.
He didn't bring something, we'd be better to kill that bus or?
We've got something we travel.
We've got one, we just, we should, we can put it right. We should have, we weren't sure, didn't realize it was going to be compressed like this, so. And that'll give us, you know, we'll be back in a couple of weeks and that'll give us time to maybe add some more materials, Mr. Mayor. But if we're, if we're roughly on the right track and you think we're heading in the right direction, we can begin to work with this and begin the process of refining it.
You don't say that kind of, you know, bit more, really good.
Yes. And we're right around our twenty-three, twenty-four thousand square foot, we're, we're keeping, even though we added a pretty good bit of square footage, you know, with the track and elevators and stairs and stuff, but we're still tracking on our square footage.
What did you hear on the board test?
I don't have my report back, but they said generally looks pretty good. There was one sinkhole area that they were going to investigate a little bit further.
Think it's right.
Yes, sir, it's right, it's, yeah. He said he didn't think it was a sinkhole, he thought it was just a depression, but they were going to, I think they went forty or sixty feet, I can't remember how deep.
Over sixty feet?
I think it was either forty or sixty feet and then they, they need to come back, they're going to come back if they got to.
They could absolutely all hold in that fifty-foot hole, we're not going to have a problem.
They, they didn't seem.
Worried.
They didn't seem worried, but they want to investigate it thoroughly and give us the proper reports so we treat it properly, but I don't, I think right now we're not dealing with any sinkholes. We got conventional footing, slab engraved, we don't see any extraordinary construction problems, which will drive our costs, you know, which will hurt us from the cost standpoint.
Yeah, that, that depression's in the parking area.
I was going to say, it's in the parking area.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we got to bridge it, we can bridge it if it's just parking or just plant some trees around it and re-park. But they are going to come back, they're going to come back and they can take a, take a look at that. We should have the report next week, so we'll get the report back to you.
Looks good.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
It's nice to be able to kind of walk through it, look at it, you know, and you can, a lot of people have a hard time picturing things, you know, when you try to explain it. Well, you can actually put yourself in the building and walk around, that's how you're able to make changes and understand the direction they can move.
Can y'all shoot channel and email with this?
Oh, yeah. You know, what we could do is, is make a video.
We can make a video.
We can make like a, I can't send you the model to walk through because that's real specific, that's real weird. But no, but Ms. Mayor, what I can do is we can, we can, we can do a walkthrough video and then send you the walkthrough video. I mean, it's not, I mean, you can't say we'll turn left and go here, but you could go through the, the building. But keeping in mind that a lot of these interior spaces are nowhere near fully developed, but we wanted to get a sense of the volume and the relationships and where the glass is, but the materials aren't, but it'd be good.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Yeah. That's a long way to say yes. And then some of the steel images too, we can take steel images, just make those PDFs if y'all, if there's anything.
That'd be good. I like usually walk through.
Yeah. And next time, we'll, we'll bring our projector and our screen to the right proportion and then we can walk through it and. Can you do VR?
It could be that, I don't know how old this one up here is, and that could be that we're just not able to.
Well, it's a sixteen-nine proportion, you know, I mean, it's a.
And you know what, we're, we're used to, you know, this is better than ninety percent of what we have to, you know, we have a traveling setup that is really easy to set up, so there's, there'll be little to no areas next.
This is twenty years old.
Yeah, no, it's great.
I've been up with here, Charles, I don't know if Charles ever went to the building, but the next three I was sitting here moving the building, that's been in there twenty years.
Usually. If you're looking at a spreadsheet, proportions aren't quite as critical.
Do you want us to do another three o'clock work on the tent and then that seems to work?
I think the tent, we can bring you the walkthrough, a little bit of an updated walkthrough. Well, well, oh, I'm sorry, on the tent. Yeah, let me, let me.
Just call me.
Yeah, let me call you on that because I might want to.
I don't know if we do that forward, I'd do it everywhere.
Pardon?
I'd give you anything else.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Forward would give you better.
Yeah, we, we, we might want to talk to you about if you need some executive session on someone because there's some, a whole kinds of different companies and businesses and. That would be on the tent, but in two weeks, what we might want to do is come back and bring an updated version of the walkthrough so that we can walk you through it and have a little more information on. Wait.
You get it?
One time, one button, one single button.
Just go a bit forward down there.
Okay, do it again.
All right. Well, thank you for having us today. Well, uh.
To recap.
Recap, so just the doors, we got, we got some glass. Anyway, all right.
What, what button?
Just go back for that. Go back to pretty little. Just do the pretty little.
We'll do a run through, yeah. Oh, yeah, but here, here.
You're thinking one button away.
Well, now we don't have parameters, I guess.
Is there a median on the twenty-seven or not?
Yeah, that's like days ago.
Yes.
Today's thirteen, your next one will be twenty-seven.
You'll shoot for forward?
For forward, good.
Four ought to be fine because we, we. The big one. Yeah, that'd be plenty, yeah. And we want y'all to, we hit y'all with a lot of information in a short period of time and everybody needs time to process that information, so the more time we have.
That video and then she'd send it all over.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that, yeah. And this is the right proportion, see the hallway?
Oh, yeah. One button, huh?
One button. I promise we don't have to build a building.
But you know, some things that I feel like is important, you know, we don't necessarily talk a lot about it, but we, we, we try, we want it to be the DNA of a lot of the work that we, we, we do and that is, buildings need to be transparent. The inside and the outside need to be kind of elusive, whether you're, you're, you're inside, but you've got a view to the outside, whether you're outside and it feels like the building's bringing you in. You never want to feel like you're this harsh line.
Like these windows here in this room, they really add a lot to the, not only to the building, but to the room itself.
About two. Wherever you are in this building, you're, you're easily oriented. I mean, you kind of can see from one space to another space.
Yeah.
It's not confusing.
And this is the pared down version where if you were to make this. If you were to, your smaller multipurpose space has.
That's what the partition drawn, right?
Mm-hmm, this is the partition right here. So if I were to slide left.
Yeah.
There's the other room. It's accessed more as part of the gym really, you know, where you would read it as part of the gym, which I think is going to be nice when you realize it is one big room, you've got the option for this big room to spill out into the gym directly or when you split it up, you've got a room that accesses into the gym and then a room that accesses into the lobby. Because I could, there's also scenarios where you could see having a, using this room as a big pre-function space to the gym, but then taking this area over for just larger kitchen banquet catering staging, you know, where you, depending, you've got four or five people.
Set the buffet component in there.
I like that would be big enough for the, what that lady does in the four seven.
It could.
Now the, the antique.
Oh, the antique.
Antique stuff.
Yeah.
They are, they're doing on their core right inside the.
But this is also. Yes. Well, look how much more they'd be able to bring with it.
Inside the gym, ladies?
One more.
What would they have there?
They, they pretty much.
That's a good question here. Well, we will update our square footage so we can tell you exactly.
That'd be the idea.
And you can see those doors, we can just make those exterior doors to roll up.
The ones there on the top right, it would be.
Yeah.
Two garage.
Yeah. Let those be ten by twelve roll up or something like, twelve by twelve roll up.
Got to be nice and wide if you're going to get a boulder. You might even have a temperature. I don't know.
Well, it's kind of like what they, they made the glass roll up, no, it's what you're.
Yeah, that'd be a storage room, it may just want to be.
You could, you could equally do campers here, boat shows, gun shows on the inside, typically a gun show, a principal, recs for thousand dollars.
What height would you think? I mean, the height of a door, you think twelve foot would be?
For.
For boat show, I'm trying to think of something that.
It'd go sixteen, if you look at a camper.
So you'd have to go probably sixteen.
I would.
And then what?
That's an interesting variable. It's RVs because right now.
Because what we're showing right now.
The efficiency to get from the tracking at twelve feet is a shorter run of stairs, you don't have to have a landing, so we're cutting square footage out, but if that's the, you know, we have not made that a parameter, but sixteen feet clear is going to push your building. You're going to add twelve feet.
We can have it inside, have shorter ones inside.
Yeah, a big camper would be, we're thinking maybe like a car show or a boat show or, but I don't, bring heavy RVs.
You'd only fit five vehicles in there anyway.
We could slip the track up at the end.
Yeah. Now, you could do it, yeah. Because you've got a lot of exterior and interior.
Go straight in. Because you're going to have to go in and in.
What's the height of it right now?
Twelve floor to floor. Twelve floor to floor, so.
Take those, yeah.
But Joe, the reason that is just the, nothing's forced us to go, we, we're actually going, how low can you go? But if we've got another.
Completely flexible, you can use it.
We can look at flexing it, but the, you know, that's the more expensive volume to stretch.
And the gulls are electric, so you need to pull those in.
Twelve foot door, puts it up to accommodate twelve foot clarity. What are the acoustics going to be like here in terms of noise and.
Yeah, you're, you're going to treat the walls and absorb sound, but in terms of enhanced acoustics for like high concert type venues, we would actually have an acoustic consultant would have to come in.
Seven, six, eight, seven.
Whether it becomes if they travel with their own acoustic panels, as long as they'll set up, to catch the big speakers.
Yeah, seven.
Or it will provide a.
Say that, say that ceiling would be roughly nine feet.
On our, all the recs in there.
Yeah, that'd be about right. Those tiles are two by two, so.
Doors would sit at common about the same. And then you have a wire. That's also eighty-eight doors or.
Eight three-os. It's a width issue more so than the height. That's going to be a six foot eight door to the, to the hop, to the top of the door, to the top of the frame, you're six, ten-ish or something. So that's what I'm saying, you're probably just call it seven foot and you've got roughly two foot to the ceiling. That'd be roughly nine, so you go three more feet for twelve foot. You can get most things in a twelve foot door.
CMU wall.
If we're going to do RVs.
We're going to have to soften it with sheetrock and sound handling for at least fifty percent of it so that we can catch a lot of sound.
Yeah.
And, and do some treatments, there's some.
And make sure I get a scissor lift for the lines. Well, right now we can come straight.